Okay. All right, so we'll call to order at six oh two. We respect and recognize the First Nations within within whose unceded lands the village of Cazlo is situated, including Hittinah, Snipes, and the Silt people, and the indigenous inhabitants of our community. Any additions to the agenda we've got? Um, well, maybe I'll just check. Rachel, can you hear us?
Are you up?
Oh, she's still there. She's okay. Good. Thanks, Rachel. Um, so if there is agenda items, I think it'll just be covered under individual council members have discussion. We'll just let you run through your presentation first. And then if you, we've got something that we want to discuss, then we'll, we'll talk about it afterwards because it might just come up during the CAO's presentation. So rather than bombarding them with questions in advance that he's ready to prepare, to provide his answers with. So, um, motion to adopt the agenda for the February eighteenth committee of the whole. Moved by Counselor Bird, seconded by Counselor Lee, with only discussion. Those in favor? Ms. Terry? And that brings us to the presentation from the CAO.
May I do it? So I've given council a draft of the budget. And I'm also going to have it up on the screen. We'll share it so that anyone watching from home, put it in Counselor Lang, can follow along. And a couple of things to let you know at the start. One is, it's, it's a service area budget, which is slightly different than what you might have seen in the past. We could do an example of what might be different. Um, you might have seen a budget in the past, Public Works. And one of the things Public Works does, if it has a fleet of vehicles in it would. And so you might see a line item or a group of line items related to fleet and equipment for Public Works. So what's different about a service area budget is it's focused on what the public might receive as a service. So the public doesn't perceive fleet or equipment as a service. But it might receive snow clearing or road maintenance, water and sewer. And in the background, staff would use vehicles and equipment to go to parks or go to a water treatment plant or snow clearing. But the, the focus is on the service that they're receiving. And so the way this budget is presented is it's broken up into service areas. Just so happened that we landed on ten of them. Didn't have to be ten, it's just that's the way it ended up. And instead of having a separate, um, conversation about Public Works, let's say, and vehicles. We've taken things like the fleet and computers and legal, finance, human resources, staff training and all that stuff. And we've put it together in its own service area called Enabling Services. And so it, it's diffused amongst all of the actual services that the public has to enjoy, like transportation, snow in the airport, or, um, a water utility or sewer. So in this regard, it's a budget that's kind of forward-facing. It's what matters to the public and what might matter to council. What are the services we offer? And then it lets us have a discussion about, are we happy with that service? Is it working well? Or do we want to increase the level of service or reduce it? And so what I thought might make sense is to go through each of these ten service areas and have a conversation about what is it? What were the, what are the parts of that service that we provide? How much money do we spend on it? And then even look at some recommendations that staff have for, um, you know, maintaining existing level of service or perhaps even enhancing that level of service. And it might make sense when we're chatting there. Might make sense while we're chatting about that service area for council to ask questions about that service area or even, um, offer things that they would like to see changed. And then we can try to get some consensus amongst council. Staff will take that away. And the next time we come back, you would see an update to that service area with whatever council was interested in. Did I explain all of that open?
Do you even have any questions regarding that at this point? Okay.
Maybe the other thing I'll try to stress is, um, we've got draft stamped all over this document. Certainly wouldn't want council to, you know, get hung up on anything in particular because the numbers might change or get tweaked a little as we refine the budget. I think perhaps the most important thing to think about is, what's the service? Is it good? Do we need to increase it or reduce it? Could I maybe give a recap for Counselor Brown? Does anyone know what her, uh, well, twenty-second recap?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. So we're going to go through this document that I've given you called Service Area Budget.
Okay.
And what's different about this budget is it identifies the different services that the public would receive from us. So they might receive planning services, you know, in the way of permits or subdivision application. They might receive snow clearing, which is part of transportation, kind of like the airport. And so there's all these different services. We set, I've settled on ten. Didn't have to be ten, it's just that's the way it went.
Okay.
And so I'd like to go through each of these service areas so that council can understand what is it? And we, are we happy with that level of service or would we want to make changes to it?
Perfect.
I will let you read and look at the wonderful pictures on your own time. But the first service, or maybe, um, well, maybe let's go to page seven. Let's put her maybe if I gave you the wrong one, page seven. So page seven has a table and a a pie chart. Now let's go to it there. So you can see on the left-hand side where it says service areas. Those are the different service areas that we identify. And then the bulk of it is where does funding come for that service? So we've got, you know, sixty-three thousand for planning. That's for taxation. And then there's about eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in services that we sell. That would make a total of seventy-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Provides the planning and development service area. So what we're going to do is go through each of those different service areas. For interest sake, you can see now taxation, we require about a million dollars for this budget. Um, we need about a billion dollars in taxation, which is less than what we did the previous year. And we'll kind of figure out why that is as we go along.
Can I just ask you, do you want questions as you go? Because I think Counselor Lee could, did you have a question?
Yeah, to the chair. So when you say sale of services for planning and development, what would that be?
Well, if someone came in and submitted a subdivision application and paid us four hundred dollars.
Okay.
Would have like a user fee.
Right, okay.
Something else to note, maybe would be the grants area. So Enabling Services has three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in grants. That's the small communities grant. So it just got lumped into Enabling Services. And certainly it might be used elsewhere, but for the sake of this budget, that's where it sits. And then under Protective Services, that would be RCMP, the fire department, and Fire Smart. So I know that the village doesn't provide RCMP to lease services or fire services. But that doesn't mean we're not partnering with them. And so it's still a service that we provide indirectly. And we do provide the Fire Smart service directly. And so for Protective Services, we have a grant of about three hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's the, uh, um, Fire Smart grant.
Uh, Counselor Brown?
Uh, through the chair. Could you just provide a few examples of enabling services, just so I can understand the flavor of it?
Yeah, sorry, I think I might have, you might have been locking in when I was sharing that.
Right.
So one of the differences between a service area budget and the kind of budget you might have been presented in the past is I'll give you an example of fleet, vehicles and equipment. You might have, um, seen a Public Works budget and it includes vehicles and equipment as a line item. But vehicles and equipment isn't a service that the public receives. And so we've pulled things like fleet, equip, equipment and vehicles out as well as, um, information systems, computers, finance, legal, human resources. All of these things that aren't a service the public enjoys. But it is diffused and enables all of the services that they do get to experience.
Okay.
So Enabling Services is kind of, you think of this as administrative stuff in the background.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Uh, the sale of services for Enabling Services, it's a pretty good number there. Um, can you give me some examples?
I think we could put a pin on it. And then when we go into the Enabling Services service area, I kind of get into some discussion on what that is. Is that okay? So this table provides you with a bit of a summary. Everything that's in the remainder of this document is captured on that table right there for a quick glance. And just below it, you can see how our funding is divided up between taxation, about a million dollars, sale of service, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, for interest sake, it's worth noting that taxation only accounts for thirty-nine percent of the budget. The remainder of the funding that we need for this budget comes from the direct sale of services and grants as well as some other items and transfers.
I do have a question. Um, the taxation under Protective Services, that, um, is that the RCMP costs that are passed on to us? Or does that get captured just as a line item on our tax bills? Or do we include it? It is that?
It is. Uh, you will not see any RCMP expenses in this budget. Or, or any services provided by the RDCK like fire. This is only services that we're providing. Certainly it'll identify it in the verbiage of the document, but there's no numbers reflected in here. So the thirty-nine thou, or thirty thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars for Protective Services, that would be an allocation of the CAO, the manager of corporate services, and our legislative assistant who, um, provide work in the area of Protective Services to help run that service area.
So that that would be the same if staffing is sprinkled throughout all of them in the taxation?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right.
Hey, one other comment on this breakdown of taxation versus sales and grants. So certainly what we would like is that taxation number to be as low as possible. So if you go to a larger municipality, you might see instead of it being roughly forty percent of the funding coming from taxation, it might be thirty percent or twenty-five percent. But forty percent is, seems to be reasonable amongst the other villages that I looked at. Page eight and eight-nine are summaries of all of the different, um, adjustments to the operating budget that staff are recommending. And so one of the items that you'll see in every service area is this three percent wage and salary increase. You'll see that in every service area. When we finalize this document, I'll probably remove that because it's not really needed. It's just, it's a necessary part of maintaining that service level. To keep everything exactly the same, we would need to increase the budget for that service area by three percent for labor.
Yearly.
Yes. And then I believe it's something like two and a half percent next year and two percent the year after. So page seven and eight, just a summary of all the different service areas and the different enhancements or reductions that staff are proposing.
Counselor Brown?
Uh, through the chair, just before we get too far past it. Something that Counselor Lang had told us right when we first started was that the amount of grants that we get now isn't something that's always been. And that taxation was the main form of where we got our funds from. So when you say that other bigger areas are like thirty percent or things like that, what covers the rest of that for them that we don't have here? Is it like big businesses that are, like, you know, or like what, what would be the difference? Because clearly like we have a decent amount of grants that are covering that. Um, so how would we, how do other areas cover that other seventy percent of their thirty?
So if we looked at a budget for another municipality and they chose to present the budget in a similar way, a service area budget, they would have those same categories, those same five categories. And you might just, it should be bigger numbers.
Okay.
One of the things to note about Cazlo is that's six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in total grants that's on here. That's made up of, um, two major grants in particular. One is a small communities grant, which is about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And the purpose of that grant is for small communities that don't have a large tax base to be able to afford the core services like financial management. So the province gives us a big chunk of money to make sure we can do that core service. So that would take up about half of that grant. The, another big chunk of that grant is for Fire Smart.
So I would think the other part of it would be their sale of services because we, I, I, in a large part, I think we highly subsidize all of our facilities that are rented to, to other organizations, um, and user groups. So rather than a user pay system, we, we are generous with, with our tax dollars. It converts to tax dollars versus, um, sale of services to the users. But I, Counselor Lee, could you get a question?
Yeah, I think I answered it myself. I was thinking of the, um, the, the Growing Communities Fund, but that's not really a grant. So that's not really a grant, right? Growing.
So I haven't to grow communities to get the gas tax. So I haven't, sorry.
Well, that's the.
No, that was the nine hundred and nine.
Oh, that was the nine hundred?
Right.
Okay. Sorry. So I haven't included any capital in this budget.
Okay.
This is only operating. And from my perspective, that nine hundred thousand dollars would be going towards capital projects and wouldn't be using it for operating.
Right, okay. Yep.
That help?
Yep. Thanks.
Okay. Um, we, maybe just chat a bit more about sale of services. If, if there was a community that was growing rapidly and there was development cost charges going to developers for subdivisions that are being built, you'd see, you know, millions of dollars in that category coming. And it would, some of it would come in and then go out to a reserve where they would hold it until they are actually doing the construction or, um, capital removal projects. Maybe, uh, to give you another kind of frame of reference, Public Works is usually the largest expense within a municipality. And that's true for us. The second largest is typically Parks, Recreation and Culture. So that would include like the library, the arena, a visitor's center, all of your parks, actual facilities. And the recovery rate on a Parks and Rec type budget would be somewhere between twenty and forty percent. So if it was a million dollars to provide Parks, Recreation and Culture, then only about four hundred thousand would come in through the sale of services. And the remaining six hundred thousand would typically come from taxation. So what's different about Cazlo is we don't have, um, a way of, or we don't provide recreation directly. We do it through partnerships like the Arena Association or, or baseball. They're the ones that are doing the program. And so it reduces the amount of taxation that the village would have to charge because you have volunteers going along. You feel so far about? Okay?
So do, do you want us to wait then? Um, because Counselor Brown wasn't here when I started and said, do you want us to just wait and wait with our questions as we go through each one, rather than through the summary?
I think so. So the summary, I just want you to know it's there. But it's also, uh, talked about in more detail in each service area. It's just a summary at the front. And pages ten, so ten and eleven are capital. So I'm hoping to not dive into capital today. I'm hoping to stay on operating. But I wanted to give you an idea of what's coming in the way of capital. So this is a summary of the capital projects that staff have been talking about. Um, and hopefully it reflects what council's priorities are.
Okay. That does bring me to a question. If capital isn't on the service area budget and this is lower than prior years for taxation, how does it get skewed then when we throw in the capital?
So at some point, I'm going to have to marry them together and give you your final budget.
So right now it looks good, but once we add capital, it might not look so good.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Just really looking that up, yeah, okay.
Okay, so planning and development services. Um, or maybe I'll just explain how each service area looks. It's got all of the same, uh, context. So it'll have an area talking about what's the goal or the community benefit? What's the purpose? Why are we doing planning and development? What's it all about? Who are the customers that are served by that service? Who are the partners that we might work with? What do we actually do, the delivery service? What are the objectives? Any plans? So official community plan will come up in lots of them. And then the council's strategic priorities. So every service area has the same context, all of the same, um, kind of headings. So let's see, so planning and development would include, let's say somebody applied for an amendment to the OCP or in a, um, perhaps they applied for a development variance permit or a development permit. All of those types of activities, including, uh, business licenses, falls into this category of planning and development services. Bottom of the page, you'll see we've got a two and a half million dollar expense budget and planning and development takes up about seventy-two thousand of that, so just this letter. And the next page, then, geez, gives us oh, that doesn't really work too well.
Yeah.
Next, you, so this is the, are you able to remove the top of the building capital?
It's suited a lot, wrong with you, but where do you need it? Or you, no, it's a little like other little black bar.
So what you're given on these tables, every service area has one. And you're given information on what the budget was for last year and how much was spent. It's not a finalized figure, but it's close. And then what we're proposing for twenty twenty-five. And so with every revenue account and expenditure account, what staff did was they went through all of these accounts. They're in the background and you don't see them in this presentation, in this budget. There's all these different accounts. Staff went through them and looked at them for the last five years to see what the trend was. And in some cases, uh, we would see, okay, uh, we had a budget of ten thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four and eight thousand of it was spent. But the five-year average showed that we only spent about four thousand in any given year. And so maybe we don't need to be budgeting ten thousand dollars for that aspect of the service. And so staff adjusted it for the five-year average. Or if COVID seemed to get in the way and kind of skew the numbers, we might have adjusted it on a three-year average. Or perhaps it would make sense to look at it, um, you know, a year or two. So there's lots of little changes in the background that have gone into what you now see as seventy-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars being proposed for next year. Some of that change is simply because of the little adjustments we made. The reason that staff like the idea of using a five-year average in some cases or a three-year average is so that we don't have these highs and lows so much. Where you're seeing drastic changes in, in budgets, trying to keep it kind of level. The other influence on why the, um, total revenue or, or whatever you're looking at on this table might have changed, aside from changing it based on the averages, would be the three percent increase in wage and salaries. And in some cases, although not this particular service area, but other ones, the Forest BC giving us notice that they're going to increase their cost of service by five point six five percent. So any utility account for City Hall, for Temple Building, any of the other, or, um, you know, water treatment plant, we've adjusted all of those utility accounts by five point six five percent.
Counselor Lee, did you have a question?
Yeah, to the chair. So on the, um, but the expenditure budget, it says that we didn't spend anything on contract services in twenty twenty-four. But we did contract some planning and development last year, I thought. But I don't know whether, if, like, if it was paid for by a grant, would it still be reflected here? Because it didn't mean higher.
Correct. Yeah, if, I mean, it was, if, if for whatever reason, it was tied to, I'm going to call it a project.
Okay.
That's outside of the normal operating budget because there was a big grant, then correct.
Okay.
You won't see it in there.
Okay.
Okay. So target averages, three percent for wages, five point six five for utilities. And then all the other expenses that might be experienced in a service area would be adjusted for inflation, which I think was one point nine percent in the last year. So what staff would have done when we were making these little adjustments to every account, we would have taken that into consideration.
I have a question regarding, uh, the, the difference between year-to-date and the budget for other rebate grants and aid. That's a, a large shift. That's twenty-three thousand dollars for, for twenty-four. What do, do you recall what the difference is there?
I believe I would need to jump on and look at my Excel sheet to give you the correct answer. But my thought is that there was probably money that needed to be transferred into this account as the money was spent. And because we didn't spend the money. Can, can you go down, Lee? Could you scroll down a bit? I'm not too sure.
Yeah, so if you.
I don't know for planning and development.
Yeah, if you just flagged that.
Yeah.
Well.
To the chair. That might be where I'm thinking because if I'm allowed to say this, we hired, uh, Ian to do some contract, some stuff in planning and development.
Some stuff in planning and development, didn't he not, yeah. But this is, that's the budget. Is thirty-seven, seven, nine, one, but the actual is under fourteen. So if we hired, then there would have been expenditure unless these are expenditure budget. But that's the budget, but the actual is only fourteen. So that's what I'm asking, why the budget was so high, but the actual is. Is low.
Oh, okay. I'm looking at it opposite.
Sorry, I don't.
That's okay. You can just. No, that's the thing. You can just like it relatedly.
And at the bottom of the table, you get to find out roughly. The amount of staffing required to provide that service. And then three follow-up, could you go down late is. Letting you know that to provide planning and development services on the left-hand side requires about sixty-three thousand dollars in tax. And eighty-seven hundred dollars in sale of services. And the three key areas in which we have expenditures would be labor, followed by. Other, which I'm thinking. Planning.
There are rebates and grants and aid.
Okay, thank you. And then a small amount for supplies and materials. And I think what you'll find as we go through each service area is labor, it's a couple that are, but typically labor makes up. Like at least fifty percent of every service area.
Uh, Counselor, do it.
To the chair, um, what kind of rebates are we talking about in other rebates in my contact?
Do you call there, here with the reading square? If you want, I have two minutes to go grab my laptop and then I can answer your question.
Unless it was uh fees that were charged and then they got, because the. Project or the D V P didn't go through or something that we had to rebate it?
Let me go grab my computer.
We didn't give them rebates from any project, like.
These are ones that we're giving out, not, not.
What about when we, like, when someone pays their water bill early, is that considered a rebate? That's in a different department, though.
No, I don't think we track that.
No, 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 no.
While my computer warms up, maybe I'll give you a little rundown of the next page, which is. Identifying what the operating requests are for increases. For twenty twenty five, which would be our three percent wage increase. And we've let you know roughly how much that equates to, fourteen thousand dollars. And then there's the capital requests. So for twenty twenty five. South Caslow Development Plan, a waterfront development plan. That's not happening in twenty twenty five at this point. And then our O C P zoning amendments because of Bill forty-four.
Wow, Counselor Brown?
Not through the chair. Um, earlier you had said that special projects wouldn't be on this. Those with self-caslow development plan, well, um. And I know that some of that budget for the manager of strategic initiatives was also not on here. Um, but this is on here. Is there a reason why we're seeing self-caslow development plan? Is that on here and not on?
So the, it's identified because at some point when we finalize this package, operating and capital are going to be in this document. Today, I'm hoping to focus mostly on operating. But wanted you to at least know what's coming for capital.
Okay.
So I, I believe it's the, the March council meeting, uh, or March fourth, there's a committee, the whole meeting. And so uh, Ian Dunlop's gonna join us and give you a rundown of capital.
Okay. To the chair. So we had that grant we got. I can't remember what it was called, but it was for Council, so. Remember that grant that?
That was combined with the waterfront, wasn't it?
Right, so I just want. Yes. No, I think this was, no, this was that, you know which one I mean.
That was combined with New Denver.
Yeah, yes. So none of that is covered off.
Correct. There's nothing in this, what you have right now, there's no grants related to projects. And there's no, other than that little bit of info, there's nothing about projects whatsoever.
So did we spend all that money that?
No, no.
No, it'll be coming in future meetings, like you're saying, right?
No.
Okay. Okay, I guess I'm not really understanding how this is working. I might figure it out at some point.
Back up. So one of the questions was about.
Over thirty-seven thousand versus say fourteen in actual, for other rebates and grants and aid.
Good. So it looks like. It looks like there's an error on that table. So the other rebates and grants and aid, that's not accurate.
The date or the budget?
Either. Looks like those are supposed to. With in enabling services. So those are the municipal grant, Chamber of Commerce grant.
So the municipal grants are in there. I looked at the seventy-five hundred and thought that might be the chamber grant.
That's it. That is it.
But then if you said municipal grants would be in there, but there at least that's. Assuming a zero then.
Yes. Municipal grants I have as a zero for twenty twenty five. For now.
Right.
We have to vote on, right?
Yeah, we've just advertised.
Yeah.
No, the municipal and rec.
Uh-huh. Could you just roll down late? Go down a little more. Yeah, so I think, so all of those grants are, need to be removed from that table and moved over to the enabling services. That makes more sense. So I think.
Have such a tough crowd.
Not tough at all. Okay, um, am I allowed to use that mouse, Lee? Sure, but you need it. I was meaning it back when we were. Okay. Okay, so that was planning, and we'll pretend that those grants don't appear in that budget and they're in their proper home. So then enabling services would be all of those administrative. Um, services like communications, corporate strategy, buildings. So that would include the Kemble and um City Hall, financial services, fleet services, human resources. Et cetera, et cetera. All of those things that are kind of in the background that the public. Um, experiences, but they're not a service. And the budget for our enabling services, I believe it's the largest budget, about eight hundred thousand dollars. And it is funded. By a small communities grant for three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. As well as two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in sale of services, which would be leases. And contract agreements that we have, you know, the thrift store is one that we're dealing with right now, so revenue from that would be in that account. And let me see if I give you any other detail on. Business licenses actually appear here. So there's about seventeen thousand dollars in business licenses. There's also interest that's earned on our operating accounts appears in here. And there's a thirteen thousand dollar, five hundred. Thirteen thousand five hundred dollar donation, which is for memorial benches. So we're expecting to sell a few memorial benches. And so what you would see on the expenditure side is a similar cost going out for the memorial benches. And then the difference between what it costs for our enabling services of eight hundred thousand dollars. Minus the sale of services and the grant and any donations leaves us with about a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars in tax subsidy.
That we do gain by removing other from.
Correct.
From the, because it, it actually does appear on both budgets, so.
Yeah.
The um, there'll be a reduction then.
Correct. Yeah.
However, slightly, it's like. Fifty-seven-five hundred, the main budget for this year.
Very good. To the chair. So the labor for proposed twenty twenty five, it's gone up more than. Like three percent. It's gone up like sixty thousand dollars.
Yes.
You've got adding on position.
Let's take a look at why. So if I scroll down to the um. Requests for increases to the operating budget, one of them is for staff training and development. So this would be to send unionized staff to training as well as management staff. And another big one is called management contracts. So about twenty-six thousand dollars of this is to go from a manager of corporate services with thirty-two hours a week. To a forty-hour a week position. So thinking about, we need to put a posting out to replace our corporate officer who left and um. We're leaning towards finding someone who can do all of the wonderful things our previous corporate officer did, but has a finance background. So that they can support our deputy treasurer, and it probably makes sense to look for someone who's looking for full-time work. Rather than someone at thirty-two hours a week. And so that's a twenty-six thousand dollar enhancement to the operating budget.
Is that a reflective of a full year of budget or is it of a partial year of budget? Just so we get a sense as to whether. This will be the same figure ongoing or, you know, because presumably it's going to take another month. But at minimum to to find somebody and we're already in just about March, so. Um, just wondering if this is reflecting twelve months of sal- salary increase or only eight months of salary?
This assumes twelve months.
Okay.
So once we get to year end, we would not have used all of that twenty-six thousand dollar enhancement. So to speak.
Right. I've got a second part to that. So when it says decreased contract services, you're meaning that we're gonna not contract as many things out?
This, this one, um.
I've seen it a couple.
This, this one, staff are waffling on.
Okay.
Um, there was an extra forty-six thousand dollars put into contract services for your interim C A O. And, and CFO. And so. Staff are thinking we can reduce contract services. Don't know if it's going to be the full forty-six thousand. Um, need to go back and look at it again, but. I, there's a good chance we can reduce it. So we're not going to need those services.
And again, not a full year, reducing a full year.
Correct.
For all of these figures.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So. Uh, one of the enhancements was staff training. The second one was turning the manager of corporate services into a full-time position. And the remaining eight thousand dollars for the management contracts enhancement is your C I O's contract. So it's, um, is it an enhancement? Not necessarily, because you already know about the contract. It just needs to be reflected in the budget so that you have enough money in the budget to pay. Then you have your three percent wages across the board. And we can see the Fortis B C rate increases. And then there's electrical permits that are needed for various buildings. That haven't been budgeted for in the past. And so staff are identifying that. There's an enhancement needed to afford these different permits. You'll see it, the same line item in other budget areas as well, like water and sewer.
So my question is, there is an increase in staff training and development. And what, on the previous page, what expenditure line item does that fall under, is this?
Labor.
Look over.
Yeah.
And this includes all admin, like internal staff. So C A O, the corporate officer and um. Finance staff, so anybody who works inside this building.
Yes.
Just wanting to make sure that it's going to be enough to. To address all of the training needs because we do have new, new staff and um want to ensure that there'll be output funding.
That should, yeah. So the eighty-five hundred dollars being requested. Would take care of the finance staff as well as management. And. We chose to put the. Those management contract increases and training increases in enabling services, but the reality is. Staff's time is not all spent on enabling services. There's a portion on planning, enabled services, parks are acting. Et cetera, et cetera. But for simplicity, we just lumped it all into enabling services.
Now, Counselor Brown?
To the chair. Um, would Public Works have any training or development that they'll be doing and? Um, is that in a later part of this or would that be in the eighty-five hundred dollars?
It is through the chair. I forget. Sorry about that. It is not included in this service area. It'll be included in sewer.
Okay.
Some in water, some in transportation, and some in parks.
That's what they'll be training in.
Okay, so those are the increases being requested. And a list of capital projects that I'm hoping to avoid.
Yeah.
And then a bit further detail is provided on what we just talked about for those operating enhancements. And there's a note that municipal grants and grants and aid are something that should be determined by council so that they can be added to this budget. So currently, it looks like hmm. No money is. Double check. Double check. I say no money for is budgeted for grants at this point, I mean, zero dollars for municipal grants is in this budget. And so, um, it looks like in twenty twenty-four, there was ten thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars budgeted. Ten thousand nine hundred seventy. Ten thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars budgeted for municipal grants last year and we spent fifty-four hundred.
We, because we gave more out than we had budgeted for because we did. The one-offs for many organizations who asked for um, relief on rental fees. That we were charging for using just facilities.
Oh, maybe it, maybe the year-to-date fifty-four hundred dollars hasn't been reconciled. And when staff pulled this report, it hadn't been allocated to that account yet, I don't know.
Fifty-four hundred sounds correct for what we budgeted for. For municipal grants, but I know we gave out part in excess of what we budgeted. Because we didn't have, we were going against bylaw all the time.
We've been talking about it.
It was bylaw, because that's why we couldn't do it. That we weren't supposed to do it because it was written in bylaw, all the rates. So we, I don't know how we. We ended up making it work, but we did give them the relief in.
Good chair, the grants and aid are different, like I thought last year. Was it last year we gave out some grants and aid and then we kept saying we have to develop policy because we're just giving. So it wasn't the, like, the relaxing of fees, it was more, um, like, was it baseball, could we get baseball money last year?
Uh, through the chair, I think that was two years ago.
Was it two years?
Yeah, it was two years ago that we gave out grants and aid to cover things like insurance costs and all these other things. And then la- and then this last year, those organizations paid for themselves, yeah.
Through the chair, I don't think we ever did develop the great state policy.
No.
So to the chair, do we want to have a consensus on how much to allocate for municipal grants in twenty twenty-five?
Well, I'm going to make a suggestion, just because we found seventy-five hundred dollars in the previous du- budget that we already had. A balanced budget for. We could do seventy-five hundred, because what I was thinking was if, unless we can develop. The policy for. For those grants and aid, if we do municipal grants and split it into two intakes, we do one. Now, the one that's open and then like we do with recreation, do a fall intake which would. Would cover fall activities that might want. A grant to offset rental fees or activities such as, you know. What we get applications for. Like I said, because it's already in the budget and it's covered off in, in the taxation amount that's. That's in this document, we just shift it down, so we're making that fifteen. So seventy-five hundred in municipal and the seventy-five hundred in. Uh, chamber. Which is one of, one of my, my notes that I had had is that we have thoughts about. Increase in that amount to react. Or we could leave it. At the fifty-five thousand and do the same thing as last year and have organizations pay for their, their rentals as. Staff is looking for direction.
Through the chair, um. If I'm understanding this correctly, then. Um, year-to-date, we haven't had. About five, but we had expected it would be over ten. And tha- that's my only consideration is if. We expected ten to understand why that would be, make sure that. Yes, if it were in the five to six range, then seventy-five hundred would be more than enough to cover that and maybe have a little bit of access. But if we're at that ten, then that'd be something that would be kind of important to know. Um, just so we know if we're going over what we would need or if we're slightly under what would be expected kind of thing, but I think that. Your suggestion is a phenomenal one, I think it makes a lot of sense. I'll be in favor of that.
Does that cover grants and aid then, that's just doing municipal grants and. Um, the chamber, right, so we are trying to get away from doing grants and aid, but.
Thank you, Mayor Hewitt, there's another line item on the budget. Seventy-five hundred dollars for the chamber.
Right.
That's already in this budget.
Right.
It is included in the enabling services.
Oh, that's where I was, yeah.
Yeah, right there.
There it is, that's.
Right, but. So, yeah, because that's where, where I was talking about, so that line, grants and aid is the exact same. Figures as that first budget where I was asking about the thirty-seven thousand and. So that's where I'm thinking we gain that seventy-five hundred, if that line isn't supposed to be there.
Correct.
Then, yeah.
Yeah, you have, so, sorry, Mayor Hewitt, I know I'm scattered here.
Well, that just, my brain works a little differently than other people sometimes do.
So in twenty twenty-four, there was ten thousand eight hundred dollars budgeted for municipal grants. The note here says seven thousand dollars from deferred revenue and thirty-seven hundred out of Parks and Rec Reserve.
It's because of the, that's what it is, it's the recreation grants because we get the money from the regional district. And we hold it and the recreation grant committee decides on the award. And last year, what happened is we didn't ask for the requisition because we had enough funding. In the reserve to award. All of the funds from last year, so that's the, the recreation grant figure plus. Our, our figure, that's what I'm guessing, so I think that. Hmm, that budget, that whole line, whether whichever one it's on needs some investigation, I think maybe before we. Figure out what we're going to do with that then.
I'd say you're, through the chair, I'd say you're safe to. Decide to allocate seventy-five hundred dollars for municipal grants. Or if you wanted. Additional funding for other grants and aid, you could choose whatever value you like.
Okay, so councillor Brown and councillor Lee.
Um, through the chair, is there anything in this reserve that we had last year or have we tapped that rate drive?
And that one is specifically for recreation grants and it's not something that the village of council can hold. It's true, we have an external committee that. That looks at that. Myself and, yeah, yeah, councillor Bird and then members of the public. So it was, I think we pretty much expanded it last year if I recall correctly. We were darn close to expanding it all. But we have put it in the regional district budget to reposition the ten thousand this year. So replenishes that fund. Cover what?
Through the chair, um, so we don't pay the chamber insurance. So at, at one time we paid the seventy-five hundred dollars and. Right, so we don't do that anymore.
Welcome councillor Lang.
And also, what about the Moye, because we used to give them. A conditional grant and we were supposed to look into that last year if we were still doing that or, because that should be in that too. Grant and aid, yes, kind of thing.
Because they maintain the beach washrooms, which are not their responsibility, but because they are. On site, it made sense for them to, to maintain them because then they can be, they can react. Rather than us having to go have them call and say we need toilet paper. They would just do that and we, I've been giving them a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For a number of years.
Yeah.
To cover that extra janitorial and supplies.
So should staff. Include seventy-five hundred dollars for municipal grants and a thousand dollars for the S S Moye. And is there any other? Grants or?
Sorry, good chair, um, we're considering, I don't think we ever did set aside a sum for grants and aid. You know, the kind of one-offs that, that we uh, don't have a policy for. Um, was there ever a budget for that?
No, and I, that, that's my intention in increasing the, the municipal grants is that you could. If we, maybe there, we spend it all by giving those grants and aid. And we don't do a fall intake, but we've got that extra money. To react to those things and just with the understanding that we would use that budget.
Yeah, that there's a limit.
Yeah. Yes.
Do you want a revolution for that or?
Or just to include in the draft? And what, what did our people thought from a thousand dollars for the S S Moye? Because that had traditionally been done. And I don't know whether they requested it last year or not. And whether with their changeover in directors as well, whether they lost sight of that. But I think it's a good gesture because they do.
We did it.
Do that, yeah.
Through the chair, do we know that a thousand dollars still covers the expenses?
We did not spread.
That's all we've ever given them with the thousand.
So we want to make the motion that we include the thousand dollars for the S S Moye for beach washer maintenance and. Uh, seventy-five hundred for municipal grants in the draft budget. As well as the seventy-five hundred for the chamber grant.
Yeah. So I'm making that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? So this just goes in the draft and we can still, until it's final, final, then we can still make changes. But, so we'll recommend to council because this is committee of the. Carry forward.
Seventeen, uh, working through the budget.
Yep, is there any, anything else that you need us to make a decision on at this point?
No.
Nope.
I didn't, you know, I know councillor Lang just joined us, just want to make sure he's aware that. Staff are proposing um, to. Go from thirty-two hours. Per week for the manager of corporate services to a full-time position at forty hours. So that's includes a twenty-six thousand dollar enhancement to the budget.
Right, so you're shaking your head, so you must be able to hear us properly. Okay, great.
Okay.
And did this, can this get emailed and do you have it in a form that you could email it to councillor Lang? So he's working from the same document?
Could you do that, Lee, do you have access or do you need a mouse?
So Lee is going to email you what the budget document that we're working from?
Okay, so the next service area is governance and leadership, which is. Um, almost entirely mayor and councillors, including your stipends and benefits. As well as staff time supporting council meetings and committees. So the whole budget is hundred ninety-two thousand dollars in expenses. Mostly all stipend, benefits and labor. And then property tax of a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. For twenty twenty-five, staff are recommending the, I believe it was two. Two point four percent increase, uh, was this C P I increase for um, mayor and council? I think it's two point four, yeah, two point four percent was the C P I.
We don't get paid that much.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this, through the chair, so the C P I we're talking about, there's a bit in the increase in deductions that. Come on a paycheck and that's kind of generally. I'm not, I'm not clear on.
No, our stipends from last year increased by two point four percent. So we got a thousand dollars last year per month to get. Two point four percent more.
Sir, the chair, C P I is the price index.
Consumer price. Oh, no. Okay, sorry.
C P V.
Sorry. Um, but. So that's the, the. Hundred ninety-two thousand, a hundred ninety-one thousand for, that must be. Staff time for everything else as well, right?
So, uh, mayor and council, the cost is about eighty-two thousand dollars. And then staff time is about a hundred thousand dollars. And just to comment on, on this table, it says minus three thousand dollars. That's because a couple of years ago, it was about twelve thousand dollars for council's benefits. It got, it bumped up to twenty-five thousand dollars last year. Staff don't expect it to stay there, we expect it to follow the five-year average, which is about twelve thousand dollars. So notwithstanding the two point four percent C P I increase, we're dropping benefits back down to what the five-year average is. And so that's why you see a minus three thousand dollars. Uh, net increase, which is a decrease.
Oh, councillor Brown.
Uh, through the chair, um, why was there twenty-five thousand as opposed to twelve?
Through the chair, so benefits, um. The village pays for benefits, one way or another, every single expense. That a councillor or staff has in the way of benefits, the village pays for either that year or. In the next couple of years, as the insurance provider increases our premiums. To recover any loss that they might have had the previous year, and so what it looks like is the. Uh, benefits that council accessed last year equated to. An expense or, or the year before, an expense of roughly twenty-five thousand dollars. Could have been from braces or, um, or products or any number of. Benefit that council accessed, glasses, yeah.
Interesting, it has to be the provider that we're using that's running on a cost recovery basis versus. Um, just, we pay three hundred and fifty dollars a month regardless for our premiums and they cover. Because we're, we're just part of a small group or are we? Right, I know when my husband used to have benefits through a different company when we operated. That's all we paid and they, there was no fluctuation because we were part of a very large bulk buying group. So I know that an issue was that we were, it's just a group of five. So to, for them to react, they charged more because I know. So to for them to react, they charged more because I know we changed providers for this year, correct?
Through the chair, so what I see is uh since twenty nineteen, council's benefits were roughly ten thousand dollars, eleven thousand dollars. And then in twenty twenty-four, jumped to twenty-four thousand dollars. And so it could be assumed that in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, there was an increase in expense, council's expenses. And then we got charged higher premiums to make up for it.
I'll go to councillor Brown, but I've got enough for me.
So through the chair, I think that's when council started getting um insurance. Prior to that and prior to our term, um, council or counselors didn't get insurance. And then it was decided at the beginning, one of the first decisions we made in fact, was that we weren't going to give ourselves a raise. Instead, we were going to try to um attract different people to run for council and one thing that might make it more attractive if if there was a benefits package. So starting in twenty twenty-two, the five of us were added to the staff plan. So that's probably why it went up, but my assumption would be that it will not go back down. That it would stay at that twenty-four or something similar. If that's what we saw last year, then that's probably what it would be moving forward. Um, because it'll take into consideration the five of us and our families and whatever things that that would add in addition kind of thing.
I have my own plan. So I'm not on that plan.
Oh, okay, four of us.
But further to that, we did have council coverage, but we paid for it. It came, it came as a deduction off of our our stipends. So it was, we were still covered, so that number would have been in there, um, but we would have been in probably at a lesser amount because we we didn't have coverage for everything, I don't think, um, if I recall correctly. So that would have been the jump, but um, I I understand correctly, we, when we we moved to a different provider this year because the fees were astronomical with the previous provider, so they provided a better rate for us. So that's.
Through the chair, do we know that new provider has a cost recovery system? Exactly the same, the village is gonna pay for what council spends, no matter what, either that year or in the next two, three years. They'll find a way, they're not gonna lose money. They're gonna, they're gonna, you'll pay, the way the way it gets broken out is, um, let's say benefits are cost a hundred dollars. That means that you actually get seventy dollars worth of benefit and you get thirty dollars as an administrative fee to the benefits provider. One way or another, they're getting their money. It just might take them a couple, three years to increase premiums and get it out of us. But now knowing that you had that bump up, I will adjust this budget to include the full twenty-four thousand dollars. And we'll see that reflected in next time we get together.
Yeah, they're they're never gonna drop it once they raise it, I wouldn't think. If they're trying to recover their costs and, yeah, because there could be years that you don't use as much dental or like you said, or if somebody is doing more major restorative work on their tooth or buy glasses or whatever the case may be. Extra services that aren't normal. Probably was to raise that back up because that's probably more realistic for you.
That was it. So I will make that adjustment. And the next service area is recreation and culture, which the village uh provides a lot of this service through partnerships or indirectly, parks for example, or the arena association. And about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars on this expenditures for this service area. Made up mostly of labor, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Some supplies, materials and equipment and contract services. Contract services, I'll give you an idea of what it includes. B, our public washroom maintenance. And tree maintenance, bringing in an arborist, some of his expertise. And there's also on the, then on the you'll notice there's ten thousand dollars in recreation grant included. And on the revenue side, there is
Ten thousand should also be up above since it's it it'll come in from the regional district. Ten thousand towards the arena and reserve. And then ten thousand that we typically put in the reserve that's for um, our parks. Um, so that was our uh Moyave and trails. Could be another thirty thousand in the revenue unless it's in somewhere else.
I believe it's buried in there.
Gotta be understood as a services then, that's the only number large enough.
I'll double check to make sure that the ten thousand dollars for the arena and ten thousand dollar parks is coming in and then going to reserve.
And then the reference.
Yeah, and that there's ten thousand dollars in reference, so make sure that's included.
The chair, would this be where there'd be like the their smart program?
Uh, through the chair, let me
That's three thousand dollars, I think. We do, they are smart, should be protective services.
Now, through the chair, Wild Safe is in protective services. It was two thousand dollars last year and I believe there was a motion to increase it to three thousand. Three thousand in this budget.
Through the chair, does this include like the um work in lieu like that was done for the baseball field, like there was labor done by Public Works? About seventy-five hundred dollars worth, is that included in this?
Through the chair, it would be included within the labor, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Uh, why is there a zero for utility? Then uh, yeah, then the other numbers are
Through the chair, I assume that there, it was either allocated to the wrong general ledger account or otherwise hasn't been properly reconciled when staff pulled this report off our software. And that when we do our year-end financial statements, I would assume something would appear there.
So a dash would have been or, uh, yeah, so not not understood at this point.
Through the chair, absolutely, yeah, there could be a little note there. There's, there are other parts in this budget where I noted something similar. Um, and because the numbers are pulled straight out of our accounting software and into Excel, it just appears a zero.
It just might, the utility costs are there, they're just not in the right budget. Correct? It would have captured all of the utilities that just allocated to the wrong budget, that is what I'm understanding saying.
Through the chair, totally possible, weird accounting error and it'll get corrected when we finalize year end.
Right, so because like the campground budget or the campground utilities get paid. Same ones like when anything else goes on in the park and there's, they use the power down there, so that would be, should be covered under utility. In Front Street Park, right, Front Street Park too, while even like at the park, yeah.
Through the chair, I'd like to think that the campground utility costs are in this budget. It's entirely possible though that it ended up being charged to enabling services because it's a building. And the account set up in our system didn't allow us to split it out to a park. So I'll have to look into it.
Up through the chair, when I look at other donations grants, uh, year to date, we're looking at over three hundred thousand dollars. The budget was twenty thousand and a twenty-five hundred. Is that because we just received a lot more donations and grants than we expected that we would? And we're now looking at twenty-five hundred dollars as a more reasonable number to expect. And um, where did all of that giant number come from? Oh, so that's what they just carried over from year after year?
Nope, nope, because they received that significant donation late, late in the year and that's why the transfers to reserve are so large as well. It's in and out, it goes straight into their their reserve. Sorry, I hope you're okay with me answering some.
Thank you, Mayor Hewitt. Should have said at the beginning, I'm not as familiar with the intricacies of this budget as I think definitely our mayor, as probably yourself and perhaps councillor Lang, so.
Councillor Lang, anytime you have a a question or um need clarification on anything, just jump in because I'm not watching you because you're just a little box in my corner. So please interrupt anytime you you need to. Because I will watch for your hand, I'll I'll listen for your voice.
There we go.
Did you have any questions so far?
Uh, yeah, I'm good. I I'm still didn't quite follow the um part about the three hundred thousand donation in the twenty twenty-four budget. And where was, what was the source of that funds?
It was an anonymous donation to the library. Goes through the village, it's held in the reserve that we have for them.
Okay, thank you.
So the increases to the operating budget for twenty twenty-five would be thirty-eight hundred dollars. The, the thirty-eight hundred dollars for Parks, Washroom, Janitorial is made up of a couple of things. One is, when I looked at the five-year average of janitorial expenses, it was underfunded. So first of all, we had to increase the budget so that we can afford what we're anticipating the cost to be. The second thing was, I believe it was twelve hundred dollars or fifteen hundred dollars that's being proposed to, uh, instead of having the campground operator clean the Bimby Park washrooms, the old washrooms. And then take money from baseball and pay the campground operator, we're just gonna cut the campground operator out of it and contract the janitorial service that does all of our other park washrooms and have them do the old Bimby Park washrooms. And then we'll, through the lease agreement from baseball, we'll receive some money that will then ultimately end up in the hands of the janitorial contractor. And so we're expecting the janitorial contractor to charge us more than what the campground operator was able to do before.
Um, through the chair, so this maybe isn't a budgetary thing, but as we're talking about the washrooms. Um, I've had Casla Hotel and then a few public citizens coming and saying that this washroom's been locked very often during the day, so they haven't been able to access it. So Casla Hotel was upset because then they're all going to Casla Hotel to use their bathrooms. And then after they use their bathroom, they come to me to tell me about it. Um, and so I guess I just would make a note to staff if we can look into why that is in in their words, quite often locked. Um, because I, just last week, I had three people come in and say it was locked. And then ten minutes later, I had some from the Casla Hotel come over and ask why it was locked. And I said, I don't know, maybe go ask the village, you know, and maybe they'll know, but um, it it was of note.
It's hardly, it's hardly ever locked, there's always one open. But some people do spend a fair amount of time in there, some of the homeless people. And um, I know there have been some issues, your CFP have been called. So, but there's usually one open. There is always one open in the winter and people do use a lot.
I was gonna make a suggestion, though, you might want to increase that budget even more and just go back over a three-year average because it was only in the last three years that um, Front Street Park came online. And if you use a five-year average, then it's gonna take two really low years when we weren't servicing Front Street Park as well.
Thank you, Mayor Hewitt. So it looks like twenty twenty-two is when this account was funded with seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And then sixteen thousand dollars and then eighteen, last year, eighteen and a half thousand dollars was spent. So we're going from being proposed that we go from oh, excuse me, the budget for twenty twenty-four was sixteen thousand dollars. So this is a four thousand dollar increase, sorry, thirty-eight hundred dollar increase above what we budgeted for last year.
Okay, so it wasn't based on the the average with an increase?
The average is seventeen thousand, so I guess in that respect, it's a three thousand dollar increase.
Because if we're including the washrooms in Bimby Park, gonna be hard to manage those over the major season. And busy weekends, um, and hopefully the contractor has the availability. It's gonna be seasonal, so it's locked after.
Can I make a note? So I'll revisit that one. And the other two increases would be the three percent for wages and then um, the cost. So you have a contractor take care of our electrical permits. And capital where perhaps the one thing that's worth chatting about on capital is if there's any improvements to the campground that council is interested in. So, uh, for example, um, adding irrigation so that then the grass can be seeded and top dressed and fertilized and hopefully make it more lush. That was one of the requests of the campground operator. Campground operator also asked for some of the sites to um, be serviced with electricity and other ones to be serviced with sewer. And so what staff might suggest is that they chat with the campground operator about what the user or the um fee should be for twenty twenty-five. And if possible, start to allocate money out of the revenue into a reserve for the campground so that council can start uh performing some of these upgrades with money that's in a reserve that, and the revenue is being generated by that campground. That kind of makes sense.
Chair, I thought we already did that, like a few years ago, we made a resolution that um, revenue from the campground. Like profit, we'd go into reserve to do campground improvement. I don't know whatever happened to that, but we did make that resolution.
Chairman, let me take a look at. If we set up a reserve for the campground.
I think it just goes on the recreation parks, you know, all states is reserved.
Through the chair, it sounds, it looks, I have a note here that if there's. Net, that net campground revenue will be put into the reserve. And so. We need to see if there's actually any net revenue coming out of. Campground.
You get. About forty thousand dollars every year.
Councillor Ben, another question?
Through the chair, I suppose just something to consider is probably very, very minimal, but if we're gonna add more grass and irrigation, then there'll be cost of that too. And that Public Works will have more areas that they're mowing and trimming and.
Yeah, camp. Yeah.
Whoa, oh, I didn't realize that, for some reason, I thought they just kept going along with.
No, no.
Yeah. Thought there was issue, but I think before we put money in the budget for irrigation, I think. It's gonna be problematic, it's already problematic. In some respects in the. In the ball field because, well, when. Uh, people rack the cans, right, and if you've got vehicles maneuvering around in there. Trying to get into parking spots, I don't know whether. The sprinkler heads can be recessed enough that they wouldn't be damaged. And, you know, do we put them on timers and is that, are they gonna come on at the right time, are you gonna do scanners and?
Yeah.
I just see that as being a question. Um, councillor Ben?
Um, just a couple of suggestions, uh, for one, you could get lots of advice when bringing these birds at the uh, at the golf course. And it seems to be like, you know, just knowing what kind of soil is down there, if I've been in the soil, even if you didn't do irrigation, you'd be. A lot better off, like irrigation in and of itself, if you've got really sandy. Soil isn't gonna be any good, so, but. Assuming regular amount of rainfall and better soil, you're gonna have. But again, people at the golf course are really good.
Another suggestion, there were some of the sites that. There was electricity requested are ones that we wouldn't service because they're. Considered in the overflow, correct?
Mayor, me with there's four that are have been designated as overflow, the ones by the concession.
Yeah.
Uh, there are. There are a couple of other sites within the proper campground. That the campground operator might have wanted servicing for.
Um, through the chair, just the question, uh, if they're if they're not serviced, I hope they're not using generators. No. Or is there any kind of, just, I don't, I can't imagine something more annoying than my camping labor with a generator. That's not the. Like.
Through the chair, I haven't heard any complaints. About generators, and I do not know. Um, how the operator currently regulates generator use, if at all, no idea.
Some people. Through the chair, um, some people do have them, and like in the summer, it's super hot. You can hear those big reeks, they've got their air conditioning going, but they're usually pretty good about keeping them on for a couple of hours and then. Um, but not generators, I think, like they have air conditioning in their units. But I don't think there's any generators that people use.
They might have inverters that you're liable.
Right.
And. Well, can we ask you to just? If Public Works has time to price out what it would cost. For putting electricity to those additional sites that are within the campground footprint. And what it would cost for um, providing sewer and. Beyond the cost of installing it, but what the cost of the operating would be that we'd have to pay to. The sewer specified area. Because that will be an ongoing cost that. That it it eats into our profits because that was. Our, we've taken that on as our responsibility. And you would think that if those sites did. Become full service, the price would be higher for usage, but it's still a long payback on that. Um, is people comfortable with just finding out what the pricing could be, and it might not be a this year thing? Because the. All the time we get pricing and finalize our budget, it'll be time to open for the season, and so the work won't happen before. The season's upon us. But at least if we have an estimate of what it would be, so we can make it any form of the season. Perfect candidate for uh, community development funds. Along with. But from the reserve. Parks reserve. Councillor Ben?
Oh, yeah, I I we're probably going on down a rabbit hole here with campground, but I'm just wondering where this comes from, this this need for it. If it's like customer demand, or why it won't stay here because you don't have electricity in sewer, like. Not to sound old, but geez, I remember when I was a kid, all you got was a privy and a standpipe for water every like five campgrounds, what are the expectations? And that is that why we're reacting and willing to spend a lot of money because of. Expectations and they're not satisfied, then. We won't get the campers, or really?
Well, we're just getting pricing at this point, and we might decide that it's not feasible, um, councillor Ethan.
Through the chair, I think it's just, I mean, there are a lot of people that come to the campground, a lot of them have trailers and. There are definitely some sites there that could use electricity. But it's a service we provide and and. We have a busy campground, so I think, and it's one of the few things in the village that generate us. Revenue, so spending a bit of money on the campground is not unreasonable. I don't think.
Are we comfortable with just getting staff in if time allows, um. For them to to price out the improvements and I guess find figure out it would be financed down, they would have to. Provide us with the figures for the additional cost for. Sewer servicing going forward for the whatever number of sites it would be. And. It said that the other part of it is, will there be an expectation that the extra sites would would trigger? The additional hookup fees. That we have set for, that's a considerable. Dollar value. That's built into that sewer servicing bylaw. And are we willing to pay that if that is the case, if it does trigger that? What all of a sudden, like forty-five hundred dollars per hookup? So. Here, you know, whether that. Negates the feasibility of it when you add all the costs together, uh, councillor Brown.
Through the chair, I would just suggest that. If the number is around forty thousand dollars. Um, all that is profit compared to some other things that we get, it's still a pretty small amount. Um, so. Any upgrades or things that we did, I would. Suggest be reverting mutual so that those would be passed along to the campers or whoever it would be. So that we would continue to bring in a similar number, I would wanna. Lower what our revenue is year after year to upgrade things there while minimizing our benefit. Um, so that would just be my consideration, if we were gonna put money into it, that it end up being recovered.
That's very good, chair, that's why there was a resolution made that progress on the campground would go into a reserve, which it has been for years, so. We have not done a lot of work at the campground. And the sewer, like the sewer hookups aren't even done. It's just would be just extending what's already there. Because there are five or seven sites that have both, so we've already paid that initial, whatever it was. So it'd be extending that. That for the other few sites, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Again, with bylaws. And uh, we did it, we did put electricity into two two additions of electricity, two different sets of sites. So that has come out. And the forty thousand is what comes in, but then we spend the money on. We do advertising and we do, we do the sewer, we pay that, the utilities, so. But we gotta factor all that in, so that's why the net is less, like twenty thousand or something, is what the net is.
For the the ones that are get sewer and um. And electricity, part of that goes into sewer. So should, I think it's forty-five dollars and so much of that goes into sewer.
Yeah, with the terms of the contract, yes, and the sanding down.
Yeah, sandy down, yeah, fifty percent goes into. Sandy down, whatever it is.
No, through the chair, that's true, there's water that's supposed to go. Um, to the water utility and to the wastewater utility from camping fees. Staff will come back to council with options for the campground or capital improvements. And maybe one thing just to highlight is if irrigation was on the table, then staff would suggest. Creating actual pads where people park, right now they just drive onto grass. And so if we were gonna have irrigation and there was concern about. Uh, sprinkler heads being crushed. Well, then that's, I think it's about five thousand dollars per site would be required to create a gravel pad. Where they actually park on. Plus the cost of the irrigation. And some of the campers might have children with a tent outside their trailer on the grass, and so then, um. If the sprinklers do come on, we would need to have a designated tent pad. And it can become quite a complicated irrigation. Um, system. So. Staff will look into it and come back to council with more info.
Bit of recommendation, though, whether to proceed or not, when councillor Brown got the question?
Through the chair, I was just gonna say oftentimes. The irrigation areas will have a flag or something coming up, people will put their tent there. Highlight, this is an area where irrigation will come up. That'd be a cheaper alternative to it, but it's. I think we're gonna talk about that.
The next service area is protective services, so RCMP filing, which is provided by others. And then the big one for us is FireSmart. So a total of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. The vast majority of it is FireSmart, so there's about hundred and thirty thousand dollars in labor for the FireSmart Coordinator and the youth. FireSmart Coordinator, and then there's about two hundred and nine thousand dollars in. Contract services for. Fire Smarting in our community. And all of it is covered through a grant. Valued at roughly the same amount of money. And I would say. Although we might budget two hundred and nine thousand dollars for FireSmarting in twenty twenty-five. We might not reach that, that's just the total amount of money we have available that we could use in twenty twenty-five. But there's actually a plan that our coordinator. Would be here in two.
Councillor Ben?
Uh, through the chair, uh, Bear Smart would also be here, WildSafe.
Yes, through the chair. You are a hundred percent correct, WildSafe is in here.
Okay.
It's in there.
Contracted services then?
Must be, that's uh, through the chair, the the three thousand dollars is included in here, so I believe it was, must have been two hundred and six thousand. Was what FireSmart was planning to spend or could spend, and then three thousand dollars for WildSafe.
Um, how come there isn't sale of services, is that? Is that the contract with the regional district for use of our? Staff for FireSmart?
To the chair, the. Four hundred thousand dollars that was spent in twenty twenty-four was for logging. That was revenue received for logging. And then would have had a corresponding expense in contract services. Or similar expense, and so we're not planning to do any logging in twenty twenty-five, which is why sale of services zero.
But then, okay, so I thought that was perhaps for that contract with the regional district, right, because they. They not pay a portion of the wages for, we contract our. FireSmart person out to the regional district? Or is it the other way around that we?
Through the chair, there's no money exchanged between the village and regional district, it's a reciprocal agreement in which. Uh, they administer our FireSmart rebates and provide mentorship and. Oversight of our FireSmart Coordinator in exchange for our FireSmart Coordinator providing services outside village boundaries. So there's no money exchanged.
Thank you.
And so the enhancements, wages and salaries at three percent, and then adding. The cost of the youth FireSmart Coordinator. It looks a little low, and we'll double check, but. Somewhere in there.
Councillor Ethan?
So that grant does not cover the youth FireSmart Coordinator, I thought about a grant before.
Through the chair, the grant covers the FireSmart Coordinator and the youth FireSmart Coordinator.
Okay, so they wanna increase it. Under um, the request?
Correct, so the village, through the chair, the village has already. Um, approved and hired the youth FireSmart Coordinator, and so we simply want it reflected in the budget that there's now an increase of roughly twelve thousand dollars. For that component. Of our FireSmart program.
Okay, but we're not actually paying coming up with the grant, okay?
Correct. So if we look at the grant, we get a three hundred and ten thousand dollar grant, and that covers all of FireSmart.
Okay.
So the only thing that the village pays for within Protective Services is the amount of management and unionized staff time. That's allocated to Protective Services.
Are you still good there, councillor Lang?
I'm good.
Okay, good, thank you.
The next service area is solid waste and recycling, so this is. Divided through. Um, contract services. About a hundred and nine thousand dollars that goes to. Coopney.
North, north.
North Coopney Waste and Recycling. And then there's about twenty thousand dollars for the amount of management and unionized staff time allocated. Solid waste and recycling. And you'll see that's about fifty thousand dollars. In revenue is generated, and that comes, I believe, is through Recycle BC. And then the remainder comes from our property taxes.
Recycle BC and bag tags?
Yes. Let me make sure I got bag tags covered, one sec.
Um, question, have we increased the price of our bag tags to be keeping with the increase? At the regional district?
Your chair, I don't. Know, and I will find out.
I know, wow, that site, they've gone from four dollars to four fifty per container. And so our mixed waste. Um, disposal fee will have also gone up. An equal amount, like percentage wise. How that will impact our our costs? And Brittany?
Thank you. We. No crazy increases, just normal wages and salaries three percent. And the next service area is stormwater and flood protection. Which only has a twenty five thousand dollar budget, and that would be public works staff time. That's allocated to maintaining drainage, ditches and catch basins, and making any repairs as needed. And once we dive into capital, you would also see the. Source water protection plan expenses and Caslow River. Uh flood mitigation planning included in there.
Sorry, um, through the chair. So this, this is separate here, I think, what's the, sorry, what's the title on this one, I'm trying to figure out.
Us, stormwater and flood protection.
Okay, so that will be different than uh flood mitigation on the, on the Caslow River. Um, any, I I'm not sure what the.
That's the, that's in the cap, yeah.
Okay, so are we?
Yeah, through the, through the chair, it is. Uh, correct, so uh through the chair, stormwater and flood protection. There's about twenty five thousand dollars in operating expense that we spend on drainage streets. Basically, maintaining our drainage system on our streets, huts and gutters, catch basins. And then uh, once we have a chance to look at capital. You'll see that also under the stormwater and flood protection service area. We're looking to do planning for the Caslow River and our source water protection. Did I explain that okay? No major requests, just wages. And the next service area is transportation, so that would be roads and sidewalks. As well as the aerodrome or airport. And. Well, labor would be the big one, followed by parts and equipment. And utilities would include things like uh power for our streetlights. Very few uh sources of revenue, a little bit from sales of service. Uh, most of it coming from property tax.
Councillor Brown?
Through the chair, um, when we're talking about utilities and lights, I know that we switched over to LED lights recently for uh some of them, if not. All of them. Um, were there any savings in that were associated with that, or did that end up being revenue neutral, or? Just the, I think what I understand is LED should bring the cost of operating down.
Through the chair, I can take a look and find out. Uh, I think it's true.
Is that under a different budget though, in transportation or?
No, it's not, because LED lights are under capital.
So through the chair, it looks like we've seen a. In twenty twenty was the most we spent. Um, this account, it's not clear to me if it's only the cost of power, it might also include some maintenance. It says twenty seven thousand dollars, and then in twenty twenty four, we spent eighteen thousand dollars. So it's, it's either. A poorly set up GL account, and we're charging a whole bunch of things to it, and it's been going down over the years. Or if it is truly just electricity, then we've seen a decrease.
So, and I think some of it is we have to pay for it as a maintenance fee to come and check on the ones that they have their lights on. That, and I think that lowers down their power lights. They, they still have to maintain them because they're their poles, and it depends whether it's on it maybe. It bobs all over because they might do maintenance every two years on them, or, because I'm sure they're not checking on them. Every, every year, um. But that would be something to, to talk to the public works foreman about how the frequency of those maintenance calls. They'd be charged a bit for that.
Uh, through the chair, it looks like there's a separate account for our Florida streetlight maintenance. And last year there was three thousand dollars budgeted, and we spent twenty one hundred. And the five year average is about eight hundred dollars. So. Operating requests for transportation, three percent for wages. And taking thirty five hundred dollars out of the aerodrome reserve. And using it for crack ceiling, try to preserve the asphalt at the airport. And also increasing our roads maintenance operating account by ten thousand dollars. So that we can afford crack ceiling on our roads. So, right now we have, I believe it's thirty thousand dollars set aside for road maintenance. That would include um calcium chloride spraying on our alleys. As well as line painting and crack ceiling, and the calcium chloride alone costs fifteen thousand dollars. So that means we only have fifteen thousand dollars left for line painting and crack ceiling. Line painting's about seven, and the number of uh roads and the condition that they're in, based on the recent report. Indicates that we should be putting more money into crack ceiling. Hence the ten thousand dollar budget enhancement being requested.
I have a question.
Go ahead councillor Lang.
Um, on the uh street paving. Um. Is that, there's money allocated for that, is that correct, the eight hundred thousand is money that's available?
Through the chair, um. Our manager of strategic initiatives has indicated that if we drain our reserve. Then we can do about eight hundred thousand dollars worth of street paving in twenty twenty five. And so we haven't brought the capital projects forward to council yet. We're planning to do that at the March fourth committee of the whole meeting, so have our manager of strategic initiatives present all of the capital projects. And at this time, that's what he's proposing, to to drain that account and. Do eight hundred thousand dollars worth of paving.
Supplemental?
Yep, go ahead councillor Lang.
Through the chair, um. Is that, is that a sufficient volume to entice the paving company to come to Caslow and set up a batch plant?
I would, I would refer to our manager of strategic initiatives, because I believe he's had a conversation with the paving contractor, so I don't wanna. I don't want to misspeak.
Yeah, okay, so could we have that information available for the March fourth meeting, whether or not? Because if they don't bring their batch plant to Caslow, the paving will only get about. A third of what we get if they were batching it right here in town. So, uh, the trucking just eats you alive. So it'd be nice to know if they're willing to come to town and and set up their plan. When we're considering how much we want to spend.
Or whether they're doing any other paving in the area that they'd already be at close at least.
Through the chair, the paving contractors indicated that there is no paving in the area planned in the near future. So if Caslow wants paving, then it's gonna be paying a premium, so to speak. But I will ask. Our staff to. Bring forward that information for the March fourth meeting.
And the other thing that will flow out of that, might as well get it out since you're talking about paving is. Um, do we, I know in the past that they have purchased gravel from us. For, for that, do, um, does the pit allow for? That kind of volume of of extraction, or will that material have to be imported from somewhere else? That's, yeah, besides the batch plant, that, the batch plant presumes that we got the volume. Um, is that, is that correct councillor Lang, that would be your? Thought as well, that they would be using our gravel resources and just processing it at our site?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, Mayor, it's uh. If we don't do it that way, it's not economical, it, we could not import the material and. And make it pay, so um, I I don't know the exact status of the gravel pit at this point in time, I haven't really looked, but I'm. I'm sure there'd be sufficient reserves there to uh, to accommodate eight hundred thousand dollars worth of paving. It might take some reorientation of the road uh to accommodate that volume, but I'm sure the reserves are there.
Now, the manager of strategic initiatives will have a sense as to what, what they're like being there.
Yeah, to the, through the chair, the uh public works foreman is looking into uh the. The, the pit, the mine, to see what our gravel reserves are. Only two more service areas left, water and sewer. How you doing?
Getting something out.
So water. About four hundred thousand dollars in expenses, and that's paid for largely through. Uh, water fees. Three hundred and twenty thousand dollars and then parcel tax of seventy seven thousand. And if there's any uh money left over. At the end of the year, then it goes into our general funds and can be used in other service areas. The exception would be the um parcel tax that is intended. To be put into a reserve and used for infrastructure renewal and improvements for water.
Can you repeat what you said, because I think. Probably said it wrong, because it can't go into other departments. Does it, each of those, those utilities have to keep their own money, it would go into. A reserve for water, not for, it can't be blown out to transportation or. It's gotta, it's gotta stay in water, if it's, the funds are derived by water, it's gotta stay in water, and the same with sewer.
We have, that's in our bylaw?
I think that's, that's a law, like, not just in our bylaw, I think it might be in our bylaws as well, but. Yeah, they are standalone services, so. Um, self balancing, you can't, can't shift them.
No, I've worked in municipality where revenue generated from water and sewer that was in excess. Is used to help afford other services.
Not, well, not for us.
Right.
We must put it in our bylaw, yeah, but, yeah.
Okay. So it looks like we have about two hundred thousand going to reserve, so we're safe and that matches with what you've just said. And, yeah, that's water. And so, oh, uh, operating requests. Staff are suggesting a three percent increase to user rates to keep pace with inflation and. Operating expenses, and then a three percent parcel tax increase, which needs to be uh vetted and. Um, aligned with what our asset plans would be, so those numbers might be tweaked when we get back together. But that's the idea at this point. And then we have our UV treatment system being installed at the water treatment plant this year. So we expect our utility expenses to go up, so we would uh increase our budget by a small amount.
Through the chairs, um, the water and sewer, um, the. All the offers have gone out to people in hope flavor, but he's already paid, right, so if we're looking at increasing it by. The rates by three percent, uh, that ship is sailed, hasn't it?
I will need to double check what staff did. Our rates for twenty twenty five.
But we think we already put it by five.
Yeah, we did by five percent. Yeah.
Yeah, the sewer and water both went up.
Yeah. Okay, that probably reflects it up there with that ninety one eighty.
Through the chair, I will double check. Uh, what we did for users uh fees. And make the adjustment. And sewer, otherwise known as wastewater. Is provided through Caslow Bay and parts of lower Caslow. About a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars in expenses, almost. A very large portion of it is in the way of labor for expenses. And it's funded through sewer fees and parcel tax.
Okay, very good, through the chair, does this budget, like when you talk about positions, does that reflect any increase in? Because I think we talked about, you know, maybe increasing the, having a person down at the. At the wastewater treatment facility, so does this include any increases to staff?
Through the chair, no, there's no proposed increases to staffing levels.
Okay.
The only increase is for the manager of corporate services position. And then perhaps later this year, staff might come back to talk about. Um, that kind of manager to oversee engineering and public works type stuff. Asset management, those kinds of things, um, but at this time, no changes to staffing levels.
Okay, councillor Brown.
Up to the chair, um, with the issues that you raised to our attention in terms of compliance and. Testing and all these things to see that we are where we need to be, might any of the implications of things that come out of that? Um, cause an increase in what we might need. Um, and should we be preparing for that, or should we be waiting to hear what the implications are and then adjusting at that time?
Through the chair, uh, staff need time to think through what the best complement or staff of staff are. And so the priority right now is figuring out that manager of corporate services position with respect to finance and running city hall. And we have a manager of strategic initiatives taking care of projects and providing some support to our water and sewer and planning. And so just want to see how things um go this year. And then come to council with a recommendation. So, operating requests. Similar to water, wages and salaries up by three percent, user rates and parcel tax go up by a percentage. And then. Small amount to ensure we have someone overseeing our electrical permits. And those are our ten service areas.
I actually like this.
Yeah.
I, I find it easy to follow. Yeah, some questions that were, were actually answered, but we, we only just got it, so it's. It's good to talk about, I think that makes sense, that we, we went on a service by service basis.
This is definitely what the public want to see, right, what services they're getting. I think it's just for me, like seeing those line items, like in the budget, the way we used to do it. And then you could see where money was being spent, but you have to wrap your head around it.
So through the chair, um, what, you know, what were you shown in the past, were you shown like all the general ledger accounts? Line item by line item?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and so what staff can do is um make some revisions to this service area. um, make some revisions to this service area budget so that it aligns with the discussion and correct some of the mistakes I made. And then also provide you with what you've seen in the past. If you'd like.
So both, both of them, so that with the variances at the end?
I just don't wanna, you know, make a lot of work for staff.
Uh, through the chair, it's no more work whatsoever. I built this, I I built the budget using the old Excel document, all the line items. And then all I did was reorganize them into service areas. And so, uh, it's no more work.
Uh, through the chair, it might just make it so we have less questions for you. Because some of the, like, a lot of the questions I had were about little line item things that were under headings. That didn't give us that information, so that way, instead of bothering you with each little detail, we can drill down into it and look at it. And then it would probably clear up a few things for for myself.
Yeah, some, I, well, a couple of years, we got a very simplified version and we didn't get to drill down on to different things because of the time constraints. Um, but the full budget is like sometimes too much information.
It is.
Um, but and we got this one, is that one for next meeting or the reserve? One, because I'm probably just looking at front and I'm high numbers. Together, or whether, or whether people are, have have looked at enough numbers now, it's been over two hours.
Yeah.
I thought maybe, uh, I thought some counselors might ask about reserves. And so I thought I would print this, I haven't scrutinized it. But I believe these numbers are probably accurate. And so heading into our capital discussions, I thought you might like to know what do we have in reserves? And you've had a glimpse of the capital projects that'll be discussed at our March fourth meeting. So, yeah, it's just provided for information at this point.
That's really good, and I have to ask two questions about the reserve. The climate action reserve, that's a lot of money. Like, what are we supposed to be doing with that?
It's gotta be used for yeah, like, it could be geothermal, it could be solar panels, it could be another electric vehicle. Those kind of things, and who knows how long LG cap is gonna continue.
Through the chair, could it also be to purchase trees for our tree plant to offset emissions? That from, from any buildings or anything? Like, oftentimes I've seen like you can purchase, like, because you're trying to balance the carbon. So if you purchase X amount of trees or plant X amount of trees, that that might offset some of the carbon that from from other projects. And so that would also maybe dovetail with our tree planting plan. Um, and then one other thing that just came up, which is maybe very pie in the sky. But we're looking at the increase in cost for the UV. Perhaps if there were like solar panels or something that would offset the its energy consumption and access of what we had. If we had funds that we needed to spend, then that might help reduce the the operating costs of the water treatment plant? Yeah.
My second question was, so I just wanna make sure the hundred and forty nine thousand in the arena reserve is not the Pearson donation.
I did not create this chart, and so I do not want him to speak. I need to defer to the manager of strategic initiatives.
Okay, because we're coming to the, like, we have spent some of it recently, so and that was our, like, we were, we were given the task of spending that money. But the village had to hold it because of the tax receipt, so I just wanna make sure that it's not coming out of there. That that wouldn't be. Okay.
Um, Councilor, through the chair, um, the Growing Communities Fund transfers out of reserve, so that appears to be like, we expect to spend eight hundred thirty five thousand of that, this buddy one by?
The only thing I can see on there is paving. It's that that big enough.
We did say that. Like, we did make a resolution last year to take Lanianna to have four paving. I don't think it was that much. But we did make a resolution to take some out for paving.
And I was sure we didn't know that, I thought that was the fund that we were gonna use to cover a possible shortfall on the library project. So if we spend it all, or the bulk of it on on paving that could have an impact. And I think we gotta
Mayor Hewitt, it looks like there's three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars allocated to the paving project for twenty twenty five. And fifty thousand dollars towards arena projects. So that could be the mechanical upgrades that are required.
Right.
And then sixty thousand dollars towards the wastewater treatment plant design. So what did that equal? It's just about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so I do not know what the minus eight hundred thirty five thousand dollars you're referring to.
Yeah, like I said, the only capital thing that I could see that was out there was the paving, right? It's the CBF, must be those other ones, the top one, it's the ones you just referenced. The four hundred thousand.
Mayor Hewitt, I would suggest that to maybe not focus on the columns on the far right. Because you don't have, we haven't given you the project sheet or the capital projects to correspond them with, so, um, you know, my intention was to simply let you know what the opening balance is, so you know how much you have in reserve.
Okay, so just look at the opening.
Yeah. That's okay.
The reserve contributions or transfers to reserve aren't mine enough with the numbers that are specifically on the water. We've got transferred to reserve at two hundred and four thousand, that one here is seven seven five. And, um, sewer, it's at sixteen thousand seven sixty four, but it's showing thirty eight five twenty nine on the on the transfer to reserve on the reserve to those are the only two that I've really looked at because it's a big number.
The shortfall for the library project, was that for the asset management?
That was the shortfall in general, yes. Yeah, because we had to commit to covering initial fall in if they didn't get the grant.
Right.
Didn't have enough fundraised money to to do that. Um, the operating going forward is a separate deal entirely.
Entirely, yeah.
Well, this is just construction. But that thing that doesn't help.
The event committee.
Oh, yeah. Yep, go ahead.
So we have, like, one of the things we wanted to do for the events committee was having a volunteer fair. Um, where we would invite organizations to set up a table in the legion and people could come and see what kind of volunteer organizations we have. People often wonder where they can volunteer, and I know there are different organizations looking for board members and stuff, so we wanted to sponsor a volunteer fair. And in order to do that, we need to reserve the legion um, for eight or twelve. And so we have to pay the fee, which is five hundred and twenty five dollars. So in the past, we have had a budget for the event committee, but I don't know if it was last year or when it changed, so um, I guess first of all, we needed to um, get a resolution so we can rent the legion and pay for the hall, the rental. And we're planning on applying for a a grant to cover the cost of of the fair, so in a sense, the village would get that money back. But we need to reserve it and, um, when you reserve the legion, you have to pay the fee. So I guess we're looking for two things, one, to put a budget line item or under, would that be under enabling?
I I don't, you know, through the chair, part of me feels like it, it might be kind of a cultural initiative, you know, a community event and that volun- fostering volunteerism in the community. Inclines me to think it might be a Parks Recreation Culture type of service, but
It does include, like, Council's birthday as well, because we do sponsor that event and the citizen of the year, so again, like in the past, we've had a budget for events, but I think the last couple of years, we just took it out of general operating, so we thought it would be nice to get that budget back, so we can do those specific things in the year that we have been doing.
Councilor Brown?
Through the chair, this is a very silly question. But like, as the village, we can't tap into municipal grounds, right? You're the ones who provides them?
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough.
So it it'll come to the next meeting, but the the minutes of our events committee stuff is it contains within that is a recommendation to apply for a community development grant of for four thousand dollars to cover the cost of the event, because it will because we were thinking the fair during the day and then a recognition event, like a dinner for uh, the community organizations, um, as a sort of as a plan for for their volunteerism in the community. So we're still working on, um, what it's all gonna look like and, um, we had the chamber manager come and attend our meeting, and so she's given us some input and provided a list of organizations that they have on record at with the chamber. So they're sort of gonna work together with us on that, and another individual has volunteered to, if we do have it happen. Volunteered to help.
So can I make a resolution to, um, recommend to council that we rent the legion for that date, or just provide budget for for the events to move the amount that just be covered under it? Would we be able to get it, though, like, now, kind of thing?
Talk nicely to council.
Okay.
But but this is just a recommendation, right?
Right.
It's within the CAO's power to
decide whether or not we
To to, well, if we make a motion, recommendation to give budget.
Right. So we spent it already. Okay, well, I'll move to make that recommendation, we provide a budget for the events committee.
And you need to provide the number of those.
Did we say fifteen hundred, that was kind of talking about money?
Yeah, probably chances of us spending it all.
Right. Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion or any discussion on that? All those in favor? Miss Gary. And I had another thing that I, in my notes, that hasn't already been covered. And I'm not sure where it would be, um, actually, it would be under governance and leadership. Was there, um, brought it up then, was there a line item for council travel? Because we haven't, yeah, we haven't addressed that specifically, and I know this year is not gonna be um, a big year, because a couple of, uh, well, mines mostly covered by the regional district as the director. And, um, I know a couple of members of council have already indicated that for various reasons, they aren't gonna be able to attend. Um, you know, AKBLG, EDCM. Um, so whether we, you know, just so we're covered. Because I, I didn't see that specifically mentioned.
Mayor Hewitt, there, in twenty twenty four, there was twenty two thousand dollars budgeted for council travel. The five-year average is about fifteen thousand dollars. And so staff in this budget are proposing fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, so you've got three of us going to AKBLG?
And maybe just further to that, the total amount spent in twenty twenty four was about fifteen thousand dollars, so if you're thinking it'll be a similar year, then fifteen thousand dollars would be enough.
Travelize it.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think there's, uh, Council Lang wasn't gonna be able to do for tickets to go have fun. And you indicated you weren't gonna be able to do it this year either, so there was just the two of us, so that will, yeah, so fifteen should probably be covered. Oh, actually, and I'm not, and I don't get covered under this budget, so there's none. Just with the same for AKBLG, I mean, otherwise everything is, it's just whatever counts, so, so we have, probably should be lots of budget. All right. I don't know, uh, I'll reserve this one, I'll talk to CAO Baker about something else that that came up today at one of our line meetings, and I think I better run it past him before I fill it on the table. In a public meeting. All right, any, any other questions for CAO before we adjourn the meeting? All right, thank you. I do like that. Put it all those in favor, Miss Gary.